The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, call the order and roll call. I will say this here that all council members and mayor right here, all of the city administrators and city engineer, Attorney Riggs will be calling in Brad Zou.
Yeah, he's what is?
What's that?
He's...
Call those guys.
I think he's muted. Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
There it is, okay. Can't hear you real well there Scott, so.
Okay.
Down the side here. Alright, okay, you go ahead.
Go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay. Next on the item will be citizens comments. Are there anybody here in particular that has comments? Is it welcome to come forward, state your name and your reason for being here?
I'm on the agenda, so I'm just waiting for that.
I didn't hear what he said.
He's on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
So he's just waiting for that.
So there isn't anybody else for citizens comments? Okay, go forward then. Adopt the agenda. Is there anything to change on that, Mark?
Um, one addition to new business, which would be D would be lifeguard wages that we talked about.
Wages?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it, all I have.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of item D lifeguard wages?
A motion.
Okay, a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion has been made in second to adopt the agenda with the new business end of it for adding item D. All in favor of adopting agenda as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye is passed. Okay, we're going to the consent agenda. We can do that one approval of minutes and the appointments and financial all in one vote. Is there any discussion on that first of all?
Um, Mayor, I had already talked to Holly about it. There was one spot in the minutes where there was a second by Mortensen, which I'm sure John would not want to be dragged back onto the council. So in the lieu of John Mortensen, if you want to throw my name in there for the second, that's fine.
No, I listened to the recording. I already corrected it today.
Oh, it's already done, okay, very good. So that was the only thing I found, so I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second in that?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion been made in second and it was stated that the air that was replaced, all in favor, say aye. Aye, John.
Aye.
Aye. Aye is passed. Okay, we can move on to presentations, public hearings, recognition, block permissions. A, item A is Cody Beltran.
Yeah, they're not on. So it says they joined personal meeting room, but if they called in here, do we show them? That's on one or two.
Or if you just click on invite, Mark, if you just click on invite, it'll at least bring you up the information, at least it should, like copy invite link.
Yeah, I can copy the invite link and I can mail it to them. Alright, I'll try that. So I don't know if you want to go on to engineering?
Sure.
Is that acceptable with Nelson?
Yeah.
Well, we set that aside for the type A. Go on to engineering. Derek, are you ready to go for it?
Yep, ready to go.
Okay.
So first thing on the agenda here, or first couple of things are just some quick updates on Red Wing Avenue and then Business Park project. Starting up with Red Wing Avenue, I've spoken a little bit with Wentz construction here this spring. I guess late last week they're expecting to start up early this week. With the rain they had last week, it might be later in the week or maybe into early next week before they actually start up. But basically what they have left is some storm sewer work over by Beet Street. They had that out quality. Obviously the vinyl paving they have to do and then vinyl turf establishment throughout the area. We put together a list of corrections and stuff like that. You might have noticed some little settlements here and there in the road that they'll have to dress up before they're done. But in this next week, you really expect work to start back up. Ultimately, they need to be done with all their paving and basically the entire project by June 26th. So they still got plenty of time to be left on that concern.
Actually, I think it'd be kind of nice if they delayed it a little bit until late May, early June for the lifetime, let it settle a little bit more, although it looks...
They can't start with any of the paving until May anyway because the plants aren't even fired up yet. So that would come later regardless. It would just be the boulevard and other.
Do all of that first. Okay, that sounds good.
So no specific action, that's basically just a couple of other things happening. For the Business Park, they've kind of been a similar holding pattern. They're going to hold out a little while longer before they start up at work. Talking with A1 Construction, the earliest that they would get out to start building that new roadway and then finish up with some of the utility work on the north end would be late this month. It sounds like it's probably more likely that they'd start up in early May with that work. Their completion date that they have is a little bit further out. They need to have the roadway built and basically substantially complete on the project by July 2nd. So they still got plenty of time.
July what?
2nd.
2nd.
So similar story with that one, just kind of been a holding pattern here for a little while before they fire up at work. Any questions on that project? None? Okay.
Yeah.
So the next thing that I have on here, you might remember during the meeting last month, we talked about this 2021 crack fill project. All of our good condition streets within town are going to do this crack sealing. We collected those bids, got two bids from Bargain Incorporated at Mountain Lake and then another one from Farner Asphalt at Eau Claire, Wisconsin. Farner's pricing came in as the low bid and their pricing was absolutely fantastic. I haven't seen that pricing in years, so that's all good things for the street maintenance budget. So the total of their bid came in just under $20,000. One quick reminder with this work, if this is approved, it's a unit price contract, so they're paid depending on what the total footage of cracks that they end up sealing at the end of the day. Validated $40,000 in street maintenance for all of this. I wouldn't expect that we would, you know, be so far off in our estimate that it would double, but it's not uncommon to exceed some of these, some of those amounts. The overall goal is to be done with the crack sealing.
Because they don't really know. They're not actually going to measure it all first. They just...
Exactly, yeah. I took together the estimate based on what we've seen before. So far in all the projects that I've done, it's yet to come within even a thousand feet on the estimate. It's one of those things that's...
You just don't know.
It's really difficult to estimate. If we can get it in the ballpark.
Yeah, that can even change from week to week.
Yep, yep. So I guess the approvals or the actions that we're looking for with respect to this project, everything looks acceptable. It would be accepting that proposal from Farner Asphalt Sealers for the 2021 crack fill project. And then the second approval that we're looking for is just giving the authority to Wayne to adjust those project quantities as needed to finish up with the crack sealing, provided that we stay within the overall street maintenance budget for 2021.
And according to what you have wrote in here, that you feel comfortable with this particular firm?
Yes. They do a lot of work in this area, which honestly was expecting to win the bid. We've done a lot of work with them in the past. They're excellent, but what they do I have no return at all.
Anybody have any questions for the engineer?
So this was in the street plan. And so it's, you know, we're kind of just following the next steps in that street infrastructure plan.
Want to talk about the manhole? No, we need to have a motion on this one.
Oh.
Just any way to, if we're going to accept that. And I will make the motion that we do accept the little bit of $19,690 plus whatever it works out and give Wayne the discretion to alter it, we'll put it that way, from Farner Asphalt Sealers Incorporated. Need a second in that?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any other discussion on that? No, we'll have to hold on. Those in favor would say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
So the last item in engineering here was this 2021 manhole improvements. So a quick recap on this, Wayne had included a portion of this proposal in the street maintenance budget that was previously approved this year. It's amounted to $13,000. It's basically just a portion of the work that was included in the proposal that's in the packet here tonight. Given the favorable pricing of the crack seal projects, he's basically asking if he can get approval for the remainder of work that was originally proposed in this manhole improvements prepared. And that additional amount amounts to $5,700. So basically the total project cost for this one would be $18,700. Just a quick summary of what this is. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at some of those pictures and rough explanations. This is basically just repairs to mostly sanitary manholes throughout town to try to get rid of big bumps where there is settlement around manhole. In other cases, there's some minor rehabilitation of manhole structures to keep water from infiltrating into the structures and contributing to the high and high issues in town. A lot of benefits to this. This is a pretty good value. Talking with Wayne, he's been working with this contracting. It sounds like he's gotten pretty favorable pricing for all this work. I guess in, the way that Wayne had described it to me is, eventually this work needs to be done anyway. So if the budget allows for it, which appears in the fact this year, he'd prefer to just get it all done right now. So I did provide a little summary in my letter that just kind of breaks down the overall budget, you know, with the crack sealing, manhole improvements as it relates to the overall street maintenance budget. And it looks like we're still expecting around a $10,000 surplus. So if that's additional money that can be spent next year for things like chip sealing or other types of improvements. So if that looks acceptable, we're looking for a motion to accept the full quote from Floor Code Midwest RLC for the 2021 manhole improvements.
I would imagine that most of the estimating is based on the leveling portion of it, not so much the manhole rehab. Were they pulling up plates and looking down into the holes?
Yeah.
Oh, they were, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know if that was just a visual on top and then, okay.
No, they'll check it. Some of them just need the casting and some of those adjusting rings. The other ones where they're doing the full manhole rehab, that's where they're going all the way down to the bottom and doing work from the bottom all the way up.
There's one hidden plus to this also. With seating of the manholes themselves keeps that water from going into the storm system and part of the sewer system. And so that's a positive in the long run because it will help from deteriorating the manholes. So I feel for the little that I know about, I think it's a good decision to make to go forward with it. I would see that it should be into the future a priority. They fall on every year to make sure that it's taken care of. So you're familiar with Floor Code?
I have not worked with them. Wayne's been working with them directly. I, you know, looking at their proposal, I don't have any concerns. All of this work is pretty typical. There's a lot of different contractors that do it. I wouldn't see any reason to worry about it.
I used one of this company last year. We used it last year.
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, didn't have any issues.
No, not that I know of. Okay, I'll move that we approve the quote from Floor Code Midwest for the 2021 manhole improvements.
I second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? So a motion been made in second for the 2021 manhole improvements and that would be awarded to Mr. Manhole Incorporated, to those in favor and also how Wayne sees. Again, there is, that's all taken care of, right?
Yeah, this one isn't, the price that's in their proposal is what it's going to cost.
So a motion has been made in second to approve of the manhole improvements. All those in favor of it, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye is passed, so. Anything else that you have in engineering that you want?
That's it for tonight?
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you, or you can go with Lee then?
Yeah, you can go back to Cody now.
Oh, is he under?
Yep.
Scott, I guess you may have to wait a little bit.
Mark? This is Cody. Hey, City of Kenyon team. Excited to hop on and show you guys what the Granicus product does. We, I also have my colleague Jesse here, that's also a product engineer for Granicus. I just wanted to give you guys a quick overview. I know, Mark, that we only have like 15, 20 minutes to chat of what the Agenda Management Solution can do. So I was just giving you guys a quick bullet, a couple of bullet points and then I'll hand it off to Jesse to give the quick overview of the presentation. So with P, it helps you with getting your hours back in the day, reduces wasteful printing and paper costs. It helps with ADA friendly laws. I'm not too sure if you guys are really familiar with ADA laws, but I know several cities or states like California, Florida, not sure if it's too big in Minnesota just yet, as well as reduce time spending filling public info requests to be able to make information a lot more accessible to citizens and then just being able to simplify the agenda creation process. So I'll let Jesse take control from here. Mark, is there chance you could give him the screen?
I can just share my screen.
Oh, okay, perfect. And please...
No, it is just...
Okay.
I'm going to switch you to host.
Okay. As well as please stop us for any questions. We're trying to make this as transparent as well as informative for you guys to know more about what the product does.
Alright, so there you go. Alright, go ahead.
Fantastic. Alright, can everyone see my screen okay?
Yeah.
Alright, so this is a front end demonstration. So this is what it would potentially look like on your website. This is a site we built, but we also embedded this within the site. During the deployment process, we'll look at your color palette, font, all that stuff on the current site and tell us where you want it. And what we'll do is just generate what we call a view page. And we'll give you a synthetic code. You do a one-time placement wherever you'd like that, or if it's going to be separated in by different committees or different boards then, or different meeting bodies, then that's also a possibility. But within the view page, once that's established one time, then we can simply look at this from a public perspective. This current client is actually doing live streaming right now. They have a meeting for their Historic Preservation Board. So we can see that their agenda's been published and then we can see that they're also streaming it live. So if we just kind of click in on this, we can see a preview of what that might look like. I guess it's not in progress. I guess I missed it and I just didn't refresh. But we can see that they shared the agenda here. We can also see minutes if they're available. If we go into a past meeting, we'll be able to see, yeah, it looks like that meeting did pass. If we go into a past meeting here, we can see an archive of the meeting. This particular customer is actually doing minutes and closed captioning. So if I click on the video here, we can see the past meeting that they had. Most of our clients right now are doing virtual meetings, so they're using some sort of video conferencing software. But in here, we can see quickly that, you know, with the video, you have the ability to have all of these items independently timestamped and jump to them. This is a big advantage for, you know, minutes capture, more accurate minutes. We can see in here the agenda published for the public to see. We can also see the minutes are published here. The solution can help automate the minutes for sure if that's something you're interested in. You can see in here, you know, everything from roll call to votes and everything captured. All of this gets pushed through your templates so that they're always consistent and clean for the public to consume. You can decide when they're available or not available for the public. We have a really easy way for the public to do self-search or self-service in terms of finding records or something like that. So you do a quick cursory search here. I can see everything that matches, just the term ordinance, which is, you know, going to be quite a few hits. But from here, I can see all those matches. They're doing captions as well, so that's also showing up as a hit. If we click on a particular item, it's going to take us right to that particular meeting. If there's video accompanying, that'll show up as well, or audio, it'll show up, as well as the agenda and minutes that have been published for that meeting. This particular customer is doing a mix of publishing their agenda, agenda packets, and doing HTML minutes on their newer meetings. So I click on one of these, we'll see the HTML minutes generation, which generally is not going to be as attractive as a PDF, but as Cody mentioned, much more ADA compliant and work with screen readers and things like that. The agenda packets are automatically generated all the way up to the very last minute so that if you have a quick addition or a last minute addition to an agenda, it won't create a burden for the people preparing it any longer. It'll renumber everything, resort everything, and make that process a lot faster and more streamlined. We also have the ability, aside from just serving the public up the agenda, a way to instantly get it to council or committee members. So we have this program called iLegislate, which will run on a Windows 7, 8, or 10 device. It will also run on a Surface or an iPad or a Mac. And from here, we can load up the most recent agenda that we have access to. It'll really be an all encompassing digital packet with everything broken down onto the item level. We can see real quickly here with these icons, if we have notes taken, for instance, on our items, bookmarks, or if there's attachments. Within the attachments, we can see them all from our device without installing any additional software. We have the ability to jump into any of these supporting documents or artifacts and take notes as I did here, scribble on them if we want, highlight, strike things out. All these annotations are saved to your cloud account for your eyes only. No one else has access to them. So it's a good way to prepare for an upcoming meeting. We can go in and take notes in independent items. And then by clicking on our note, it jumps us right back into the item which we took the note on within accompanying attachments or anything for those items. So that's kind of a quick overview. Are there any questions so far? Okay. Like I said, you have the ability to timestamp these meetings if you want at any point. If you have the video solution, so simply starting up the meeting, double clicking on the items will instantly create those timestamps. Or if you are doing live meeting minutes, you can create those on the fly as well with pre-canned actions, action text, and all of that. And as we double click on a single item, it instantly creates timestamps as we go. You can also add these manually post meeting if we wanted to as well. And this entire solution can be upgraded at any point with electronic voting capabilities. So if you wanted to do your voting from the tablet or, for instance, join, you know, a live meeting that's in progress, you can do that and do things like motion or second, request to speak, or if a vote's being held, cast your vote. And we even have an additional piece of hardware which will show whatever's going on in the current meeting, sort of like a scoreboard for your meeting for the public to see in the council chambers, or if you chose to broadcast that with the video, you can do that as well. Sort of moving back into this area here, one thing we can also do in terms of agenda delivery for the public is have a subscribe box and for any particular meeting body or as a general rule where the public can subscribe. At that point, when you are publishing the agenda on the backend, simply click the envelope icon and be able to send that out to the people who subscribe to that interest topic. And we use our world-class cloud communications platform for that, which is also in use by the Social Security Administration, DOD, ATF, the White House, and lots of state and local agencies as well as many federal agencies. It's better authorized, super secure, and has over a 99% deliverability rate, ensuring that it will make it into the inbox for any interested business owners or residents in the community. Are there any questions so far?
Yeah, I have a question. Will there be any issues with the public accessing some of these documents? Will they have to download certain type of apps or programs in order to do so? Or is this all, is it compatible with different devices and, you know, different ways in which people will access it? Some, if they go on with their phone, others with their laptop, will it be compatible with all that?
Yeah, so Granicus is also a web development company and we find that about 50% of visitors that we see on the websites we go are mobile users. So responsiveness, compatibility across the board plays in terms of, you know, device compatibility as well as browser compatibility, platform compatibility. But it's also a huge part of ADA compliance because screen readers and other assistive technology or software needs to make sure that certain standards are adhered to. So that's a huge priority and we consult on the... and we consult on the regular with, uh, a few different firms that specialize in just ADA compliance testing and, and advisory and motions and stuff to our software. So that, that's a big priority already for a number of reasons. Um, in terms of the agenda, you do have a few, uh, choices when you go to publish these agendas. So if I just pull up, uh, an agenda here, again, this is the HTML version, but if you had attachments, they could be preserved in the original format, which is really handy if you have like a really wide spreadsheet or something that doesn't translate to PDF well, uh, or is easy to view in there, you wanna manipulate it, uh, Word documents. Um, so if you, uh, do make the original attachment accessible, uh, you have to keep in mind that, um, the user would need to have some, some sort of app to open those or they can all be converted to PDF on the fly and, and thus opened in the browser. Um, you also have the ability, uh, this customer's not doing it, but you have the ability to generate just an agenda packet in general. And the agenda packet would have, uh, the original links to the files in our cloud, uh, as well as all of those files flattened out as, uh, as artifact attachments and bookmarked throughout the PDF and number. So it could really be up to you in terms of working with our design department and figuring out what, what template and format, what field should be exposed and if those original documents are linked to or suppressed. Uh, does that, does that help?
Yep.
Okay, good. There any other questions or, uh, use cases or anything? Uh, anyone had any questions around, I'm not trying to rush you this too fast, I just know that we have a very limited amount of time.
Like when we, so if we vote on stuff and we do it like on a computer, like I'm just a little confused about that. I mean, obviously, it just, is everybody here that or are we silent or, is that what I'm saying?
Yeah, sure. We may not set it up that way right away. You know? We could do it that way, but we may not do it that way. You know, we could set it up so that we have real-time vote tally and kinda things, but we don't necessarily, we don't have to do it that way. And I think at first, we're probably gonna be more like how we do it now.
Okay.
But I think eventually that could be something that could be, you know, added to this. Um, but I don't envision us doing that right now. I think right now we would still do the voice vote like we do, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So I wouldn't worry too much about like that kinda thing, 'cause if that happens, it'll be kinda probably down the road a little bit.
Okay. I mean, I, I mean, I don't care, just seems, it just seems like it's quiet, like it's.
Yeah, I can't picture us doing that right away like that.
Yeah, um, I kinda brought that out just to show that there's a lot of runway in terms of automating more things, uh, digitizing more things, uh, down the line. And, uh, there's really no penalty in not doing all that work upfront. You can certainly just kinda bolt on those things like Legos. So we have some capabilities for citizens. If you wanted them to sign up to speak online and automatically go into a queue, if you wanted them to be able to send digital comments, uh, for open agenda items, things like that. Uh, we have other pieces of the suite that can be activated to add more capabilities as, as you grow.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. Is this, um, uh, that some of the prices that, that you're showing here, is that for the whole packet? Or is that broke down to various different, um, packages, we'll call it?
Uh, Cody's probably a little more familiar with this.
Yeah, so the, that, so this is, uh, P. So there's, if we wanted to add on additional features to P, then we could, uh, but I sent the quote over to Mark yesterday, Monday, or yeah, yesterday was Monday, um, and then a couple of weeks ago, so that's just the straight price for what we're showing now, but if we wanted to like add additional features, then that's just an additional price, such as like video or voting, um, there's additional things, but it comes with a thing called also Send Agenda, Send Agenda, which we could also go over if you guys are interested.
And the, the Send Agenda piece is, is free without cost, so you just have to, uh, tell us you want it and we'll, we'll integrate it.
So the, the base, um, the base quote that you gave us, is that for the, basically the agenda management part of this, the base agenda?
Correct. Um, so if you guys want to turn on Send Agenda, that's also free integration with P.
Yeah, the, so kind of clear from what I've showed you so far, uh, the front-end interface that the public sees, search capabilities, uh, the agenda, agenda packet, minutes creation, um, post-meeting minutes creation, as well as the other aspect that I showed you, um, being iLegislate, so the instant delivery of the agenda, that's also included in our Agenda Management Product Suite. So those are the things that you would get out of the box with this deployment, uh, but you'd certainly have the ability to add anything additional in one, down the road.
Alright, so I think our plan is, I wanted to give the council an overview of this format and then next month, I would like to talk more about, uh, pricing when I get the specific final quote. Um, 'cause you guys said you sent it to me yesterday, you emailed it yesterday?
Yeah, I sent the final quote yesterday.
Okay, so I don't know.
It came, sort of came as a attached PDF, Mark.
Yeah, so anyway, but that's what my plan was, kinda if the council's, you know, good with us moving ahead with it, then get quotes or we'll get some of the quotes that we have for the next, um, for the main council meeting. Um, 'cause we're also gonna talk a little more about the COVID cares, federal funding. Um, hopefully we'll have a little better idea of how much that's gonna be. Um, but that's what I'm looking at for this, at least the first couple of years. My recommendation would be as hard to pay for it. But I think it'd be an excellent addition to our accessibility suite as we try to make things more accessible to the public and also for ease of the council and the staff. I think this would be a good, a good way to go. So we're not messing with these PDFs and we have real-time agendas. We can click on items, bring them up and I think it would be a good thing. A lot of cities, you know, have gone to this kind of platform, so.
Perfect. Yeah, so Mark, I can send the quote again to you if you have it tonight.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. We're not gonna probably talk.
Shows up on the top of your inbox.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, if there's any questions, we don't wanna clog the, the rest of the city council meeting, but if you have any questions, please let me, me or Jesse know.
Alright, I'm sorry if there's any other questions, so. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for inviting us this evening. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good, thank you. Well, with that, we can move on and, um, we'll start with Leo and his attorney rates on the screen now.
I think he was. He was trying to hand me the control of the meeting back and just. Um, so the first item we can start talking about, um, would be the agreement with Tully's for Taco Express. Um, at the March meeting, the council asked me to go back and talk to Tully's, the Tully's family about an increase in the, um, annual lease. And I talked to them about, um, now the, the lease the last, what, 15 years was $250. So I talked to them about increasing it to 350 next year and then 422. Now, the 350 would be a 40% increase, so that's a pretty big increase in one year. Um, and then we would talk to them again about, um, 400 or possibly higher the next year, but, um, so basically that would bump it up, I think, a fair amount. And so anyway, that's what I came back with and so when, so we put it back on the agenda and the council's good with that, um, go ahead and, you know, prove it if not, it will, you know, discuss it further. Scott, sorry about that.
I, I have nothing to add on that. Uh, the agreement is the same we used before. Nothing needs to change in the agreement. Absent the dollar amount, the council is satisfied with.
Any motion? Yep.
I motion? Okay.
Go ahead. We did sound, how are we? I'm sorry. Alright.
Yeah, is there any further discussion on it? Um, does everybody feel satisfied with the $350 MLP for this year? Now, does that tie us in to the 400 next year or is that?
No, I would go back, talk to them next year. I left it that we would talk about it again next year, so I didn't, you know, so it would just be, this is just a annual agreement basically. So you'll revisit, we'll revisit again next year.
Okay.
So you wanna come down the agenda for the next time?
No, we're gonna vote on it.
I'm gonna vote right now? Vote on the 350 increase for this year.
Yes. Two of $350 from the 250.
So do we make motion to vote on it? Um, okay, I'll make a motion to vote on it.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Not? There's motion been made and second for an agreement of $350 for the 2021 agreement with, uh, Taco Express. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes passed. Okay. Item number B. Scott, would you like to speak up on that, please?
Yeah, sure. Um, what you have before you is the request for a, uh, an extension and/or a new contract for the flum disposal contract. Mark lays out in the city administrator memo the premost relevant provisions or, or rationales or issues. You certainly can provide us an extension. You could do a five-year contract. You could do just a three-year contract and decide to extend it. You've done three years in the past is, is really where you've kinda gone on the, the amount of, of length of term you've done before. But the council has very broad latitude in this area. Um, you could also go out for proposals and seek other, uh, responders, but that's, that's not what staff is recommending at this point in time. And Mark can, can add in anything else to that.
Yes, Scott, I think you pretty much covered everything. The, I guess what staff recommendation would be one of two things. Either to extend the current agreement for an additional two years per the terms of the agreement with current hauler or negotiate a new agreement, which I would anticipate would not be much different than the current agreement. Or, now the hauler asks for five years. If you do, uh, the exact type of agreement is currently in place, it's three years with a two-year extension, so that would basically be five years. It's not guaranteed for five years, but I would recommend staying with, if you're going with a new agreement, three years with the two-year, two one-year options at the end of the three years. I guess my first recommendation would be just to go with another two years, but, um, either one of those I think is good because I think the key here is that the hauler's done a very good job and, you know, the city had five years, probably in a four or five-year period, two runs with waste management, which were both not very good. Not being nice when I say that. And we also had Gibson, which did a good job, but Gibson got bought out by waste management. So part of the thing with the five-year agreement is this whole spectrum of these small haulers getting bought out by waste management, one after number after number. If we have shorter agreements, it just, I think protects us more, protects the city more, so. But I, I have no bad, um, experience or anything to say with flum. They've done a good job. You know, if you go to an RFP, we'll probably get better, lower prices, maybe, but, you know, I think that we've been through this wringer a couple of times here with, um, with waste management and just different companies and it's not, not the best. The residents don't like it and, so I mean, I think it's nice to have stability in this area with all the other group of things going on in the world. It's kinda nice to have one area that we don't have to worry about, so. So in a nutshell, Mary and Molly, this, the city actually operates, has a waste utility, so the city, you know, some cities have municipal trash. Well, we could have municipal trash, but we're too small, so what we do is we contract it out. But the city has a full utility, which gives us a lot of ammo, a lot of power to regulate, which is really nice to have, residential hauling. So this does not cover commercial. Um, commercial's open, but residential is one hauler and, and I really like that system. I think it works good, so. Anyway, so I guess the bottom line is I think the city would be better sort of to stay with flum whether it's a two-year extension or a new contract. I think that's what staff recommendation would be.
I would agree. I would agree that five years for a contract for anything is, is a long time.
Yes.
And not for there's anything wrong with them, but exactly what you're talking about. Getting bought out or things can change and being stuck in a five-year contract or having to try and get out of a five-year contract. It's a long time.
It is. And the city went through two buyouts, Ron Gross and then Gibson. And, yeah, I've dealt with solid waste enough going back 20 years. Um, in, you know, with, when the county had a solid waste advisory board, so I mean, I've worked a lot with solid waste issues and these haulers. But anyway, yeah, I think a shorter would be a safer way to go.
The other issue with a five-year contract is you really tie the hands of the council. You could have someone get on the council and get off the council and have absolutely no ability to put input in on a contract because the contract's five years and the term is four, or mayor's two, I think. Yeah, I mean, so, you know, that, that really ties the hands and, um, so we're, we're, we're coming off of a three-year agreement with, and the option of that three-year contract was that we could extend it for two years.
Yep, yep.
I, what I like is extended for the two years, that would give the city time to negotiate then with them the next three-year contract and then with the two-year extension on it, that, that then allows, as the council changes, it allows the, the members who come on the opportunity to have input.
Yeah.
And if I could add and clarify one other thing, based on our experience that Mark describes with, uh, licensees being bought out, we have added in a provision into this agreement, no matter what the term is, one year, five year, 10 years, that it cannot be assigned unless the council votes and approves that. So, uh, you do have that control. We have added that into the agreement, so you are protected in that fashion.
I've been listening to all of it. I agree with you on the five. I have personally looked at it for what, what the, what the trash hauler has done is absolutely a marvelous job. I have not heard of one complaint. And I kinda feel this way a little bit about, I'm looking at three years. The council will still be the same three years. Everyone is the mayor's team now. But give them something to work forward to that they have three years tied down. I am not totally against to, but I'd like to give them that option and we still have that if the, let's say they did get sold out. We still have the option of, of coming up. There's a certain contract that they have to meet, the new trash hauler, whomever has to, and we could get rid of that. It would take a while and we almost came up with that with, with waste management, having a problem with it. I know two years would probably cut it out, but let's say, um, they decide to sell in a year. We're still back to the same goal. So I'm setting between two and three years.
So if we did the three, so we would forego the two-year extension and we would do a new contract, even though they modified, we would do a new contract for the three with a two-year extension? Vote setup now.
Yeah, you could do that. There would be exactly the same language you have right now. You could start with three years and you could do the two-year extension or you could simply just leave it at the three years, whatever you'd like to do.
I mean, a new contract means that you could theoretically put anything into it, but I would recommend, yeah, sticking with this format because it's worked really well, like protected the city well, so.
I'm fine with members.
I'm with you. I'm fine.
I'm fine too.
Has anybody else got a discussion on it that, um, is up to? Has anybody else got a discussion on it that's up to us to make that decision? If you want two or three years, or motion has to be made?
I motion to approve a three-year contract.
I'll second that all.
Like a new contract?
A new contract.
Okay.
A new three-year contract. That's what I motion, and I'll second that.
And I'm going to ask again, is there any more discussion on it? Because I, that's only a personal feeling on it, but I'm satisfied with two also, so...
I just don't, I just think five is too many.
Oh, I agree with that.
And five or two or three, honestly, five is just too many, I mean, they're just the same, it's just that.
I wouldn't even agree with three, but this trash hauler has been suburb. I mean, they have been 100% plus, and that's why I think giving them back a little bit more, that they know what their future is looking at, I think is well worth it. Okay, we're going to go for it then, all in favor of the new three-year contract with Waste, or with Flum Hauling Disposal? Say aye.
Aye.
So, here's how this is going to go, Scott, you can correct me or add to this, but we'll come back with a final contract. So, in other words, you gave us kind of the parameters, say, here's what we're going to, here's what Scott's going to come up with, he's going to draft up a new contract, and then that will go to the hauler and back to the council. Probably at the May meeting, the current contract expires the middle of June, so basically that will be the parameter, so you'll still have another chance to tweak it or whatever, you know, to review it, so it's not really the final, you know, the final decision of this.
No, that's right, that's exactly right. Mark's got it right, and, you know, there'll be very minor changes to the previous iteration of the contract that you'll have before you, and we'll explain and answer any questions, but it'll be very similar to what we have in tonight's packet.
Okay, get that one out of the way. Now, item C.
Yes, this is one that presents an interesting issue for us. What really is going on here is an attempt to combine lots, and we have a provision in our city code in chapter 565 that allows lot combinations and minor subdivisions or either of those methods, that do not require a full plating process. Unfortunately, and Mark pointed this out in his city administrator memorandum, when you have lands that are in two separate plaques, it is required by the county to be replatted. And that means you do need a plat, we can't do a simple lot combination, which we, I don't want to call it a variance, but it's a truncated way of doing it, that we don't have somebody go through the entire plating process. Unfortunately, that does not work here. So what you have is a draft of a plat that, as long as we run it through kind of a simplistic version of what's required in chapter 565 for a preliminary and final plat approval, that should satisfy what the county needs to file this and have a combined lot. It's my understanding in talking with Mark that the landowner is willing to do that. It would require that we review title work, but other than that, we simply need to have a hearing at the planning commission level, which is required by state statute, and then a approval of both the preliminary and final plat. That would be simply done at the council coming up, so the process doesn't have to be that long. We already, it looks like the majority of the work's been done by the landowner with the preliminary plat drawing. So beyond that, I don't have any other better solutions. Mark and I were trying to figure out if there's something else that could be done. It does not appear that's the case, we do have to do the plat, so there's nothing for you to act on tonight, other than Mark and I answering any questions you have.
More than applicants under here. Do you guys have any questions?
What's the timeframe?
Scott, you want to take a second?
Well, I can. As soon as Mark can get this on the planning commission agenda, where we have the appropriate notice, which I believe is 10 days' notice, that we have to show for that public hearing, it would go to the planning commission, then could go to the council at the next meeting and be approved at that point in time. So really, it's a matter of meeting deadlines to get this moving forward.
We have to schedule a public hearing, Scott?
Yes, yes, we do.
Can you guys get it?
And honestly, you know, our code, and most codes stay, it can be at the planning commission level or the council, so whatever works better, we can do that, but typically, we've done it at the planning commission level. Again, this is a very minor type plat, so it's not the usual type of analysis that the council and/or planning commission would do. Derek likely should take a look at it to make sure there aren't any issues relative to requirements engineering-wise. I likely don't believe that'll be a very long review. I will look at it, I do think that there's a question of whether or not the appropriate perimeter easements are on this plat. I, we, Mark, we can talk offline directly with the landlord, we can discuss that, but other than that, that's the only requirement that I see that's not met via city code at this point in time.
So Steve, one thing you might want to do, like, is contact Johnson-Sorenson, and tell him that, you know, what Scott just said is that we're not sure that all the easements, the correct easements are on there. If you could contact him, and maybe they can get, kind of, take a look at that. So if we schedule a public hearing, I would definitely recommend it's at the planning commission, that's how it's always done, and that's what their planning commission's there for. So Scott, yeah, when you can get us the notices, we would, I guess we can get it published, if I can get a meeting scheduled, you know, we can get it published next week.
Okay.
So we would have to go, it's going to come pretty close to where the council meeting is, but we'll try like heck to get it in before that, and if you can get us the notices, Scott, then we'll get it going.
Yeah, we'll have it due tomorrow, so you can get it, whatever publication-wise and date-wise, but you'll have the notes tomorrow.
All of those other easements should be on somewhere, right? Otherwise, where are they going to know to get?
Yeah, I'm assuming they looked at title work, but what the code requires is that any new lots or any new plaques that are created have perimeter drainage and utility easements. Usually, it's a 10-foot front and back, and then a 5-foot on any side lots, depending on what it abuts against. Here, it abuts against two streets, so likely they're 10 feet. That doesn't mean the planning commission couldn't look at that and say there's something less. I'm surprised that based on how this was planted before, that it was involved in two different plaques, that there aren't already easements there, but they're not showing on the depiction I have. So it's something we can clarify very easily.
And who clarified that?
Uh, well, usually, well, between Derek, the city engineer and I, and the surveyor, we can tell you what's there or not. I don't have your title work for the property, that would be the quickest way to show if there's anything else that conflicts here. But again, with new ones, it's just a matter of depicting them on the plat, they're not depicted on this plat, that's what I'm saying, so it's really a surveyor question. And we can get them the code language that shows what he needs to do.
Is this Johnson and Schofield? Yeah, that's, that's the one? Correct. Does that match? Well, that's the one that they surveyed the property last time, too. So I just, you know, but when I'm looking at this, just very briefly here, I see the utility easement along one side adjacent to, I don't know, both Second Street, along one side of the property, but it may not exist along the street or edges. Right, I think it's the backside, it's not shown on there. So, I mean, if there isn't something there already, then it may just be a process of, you know, through this plating process, just designating whatever space is needed that needs to be added. Is that something, if they can just look, if you can have your surveyor take a look at what the city code, if you can make an amendment to that, that would be just a... I'll read it over to him. I know there's an easement across the back, because that's where all the electors are going to be in the room, so... Sure, yeah, and that's where there might be some stuff on there, it's just not showing up, but some of it shows up, like Scott said, with the title work.
Just to clarify myself, we're looking at...